Good evening. Good evening. We're going to go ahead and get started with this City Commission meeting for June 3, 2024. The City Clerk can please call the roll.
Commissioner Colwell.
Here.
Commissioner Harriet.
Here.
Commissioner McCool. Commissioner Schinkus.
Here.
I'm here.
Vasquez. Vice Mayor Jody Lee.
Here.
Mayor Villal.
Here. This time, I'm going to call Commissioner Vila Vasquez to do the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, our... The person who was going to do the invocation today couldn't make it. He was out a little bit under the weather. So if I'm going to ask everybody to please stand and have a moment of silence, a moment of prayer, use it to what you feel is the most important thing in your life right now. I know it feels a little bit long, but we do... We need a lot of prayers here today. I also want to ask... Actually, I want to ask our visitor here from the Marines if he can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you.
This time, we're going to move for approval of minutes a special commission meeting of May 2, 2024, the regular commission meeting and executive session of May 6, 2024, as presented.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Vila Vasquez. Second by Commissioner Colwell.
Yes.
Doors are locked.
There you go. Glenn, can we make sure the doors are not locked, please? Motion passes 6 to 0. At this time, we're going to go to the floor and we're going to do presentations or proclamations. All right. At this time, we're going to do the proclamation for National Military Appreciation Month.
Thank you, Mayor. So today, we are going to be honoring a veteran, just like we have been doing for the past few months. And I want to say that many people think when you say a veteran, they think of men, right? Immediately, you think of a men's soldier in your mind. But I'm proud to know many female veterans, many female who have served our country. And one of them, a very special lady, a very special friend. One whom I have worked side by side in fundraisers and many events, one whose friendship goes back to 2005. I want to call up retired Lieutenant Colonel, U.S. Army, Alvesta Moore-Lobin. Lieutenant Colonel Alvesta Moore-Lobin is a distinguished military graduate with a Bachelor of Arts degree in Business Administration, Business Information Systems, a Master's degree in Business Administration, and an education doctrine in educational leadership. She is also a graduate of the Army's Armed Forces Staff College and Command and General Staff College. She was commissioned as Second Lieutenant in 1982 into the U.S. Army Finance Corps. Over a 21-year Army career, she held a variety of military financial management and controller assignments where she was responsible for fumulating, analyzing, interpreting, and evaluating a broad change of Army financial policies, procedures, requirements established by the Office of the Secretary of Defense, Office of Management and Budget, General Accounting Office, and Congress. She also served as a battalion commander of a training support battalion at Fort Jackson, South Carolina, until her retirement from active duty in 2003. Lieutenant Colonel Moore-Lobin's military awards and decorations include the Legion of Merit, the Defense Merited's... Did I say it right?
Meritorious.
Meritorious, Service Medal, Army Achievement Medal, Office of the Secretary of Defense Identification Badge, Army Staff Badge, and Parachute Badge. From May 2005 to June 2022, Lieutenant Colonel Moore-Lobin served as the Junior Reserve Officers' Training Corps, as we know as the JR OTC, Senior Army Instructor, and Program Manager at Deltona High School. During her tenure at Deltona High School, she was selected as Teacher of the Month in April 2015 and August 2015, recipient of the prestigious Volusia County School Crystal Apple Award in 2015, Volusia County Juneteenth Hometown Hero, NAACP Difference Maker Award, and numerous others on campus teachers' awards and recognitions. I lost my place. For over 10 years, she served on the Deltona High School Advisory Council as co-chair and member. She is a member of numerous military-affiliated community service and volunteer organizations in Volusia County and surrounding counties in central Florida. She is married to Andrew Lobin, and the couples reside here in the city of Deltona. It is my honor to present you with this certificate of recognition. Thank you for your service from 1982 to 2003 in the U.S. Army, holding a variety of military financial management and controller assignments, especially the Junior ROTC. You did so much work. Okay, I was given another one. So this is a proclamation from the city of Deltona, whereas the freedom and security the citizens of the United States enjoy today are direct results of the bloodshed and continued vigilance given by the United States Armed Forces over the history of our great nation. And whereas the sacrifices that such members of the United States Armed Forces and of the members that support them have preserved the liberties and have... Got to slow down. And have enriched this nation, making it unique in the world community. And whereas the United States Congress in 1999 declared May as National Military Appreciation Month, calling all Americans to remember those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in defense of freedom and to honor the men and women of all branches of our armed services who have served and are now serving our country, together with their families. And whereas the month of May includes Loyalty Day, May 1st, VE Day, May 8th, Military Spouse Appreciation Day, May 2... How come I missed that one? Annual Forces Day, May 18, and Memorial Day, May 27. Whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water. And now therefore, we, the mayor and City Commission of Deltona, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as National Military Appreciation Month in Deltona and encourage all residents of Deltona to join in showing their gratitude by appropriately displaying flags and ribbons during the month of May, executed this 20th day of May 2027... 24. And I want to call up... Counselor?
All right. And I will be presenting the Mental Health Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas mental health is a part of overall health that sustains an individual's thought processes, relationships, productivity, and the ability to adopt... adapt to change. And whereas one in 25 adults live with mental illness such as major depression, bipolar disorder, or schizophrenia; and whereas roughly one-half of chronic mental illness begins by mid-teens and three-fourths by the mid-20s; and whereas early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental health illnesses and recovery; and whereas it is important to maintain mental health and to recognize the symptoms of mental illness and seek help when it is needed; and whereas Mental Health Awareness Month is an opportunity to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health and to promote the identification and treatment of mental health. Now therefore, we, the Commission of City of Deltona, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Good evening. I have the honor tonight of reading Deltona's first-ever Pride Month proclamation. By all means. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to receive this proclamation on behalf of the community, you're more than welcome to step to the front as I read. Thank you. Whereas Deltona, Florida, is a community of diverse cultures, races, creeds, genders, and sexual identities which work together towards peace and understanding; and whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender questioning and other sexually residents, students, employees, and business owners within Deltona contribute to this vibrant, innovative, culturally inclusive community and its diversity; and whereas various advancements exist respecting equal rights and protections for all citizens, including the LGBTQ community throughout the state of Florida and the United States; whereas Deltona takes a positive stance against discrimination and violence and celebrates the diversity in our city; and whereas Deltona is committed to helping celebrate an environment where each individual can feel respected, welcomed, and understood. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of Deltona, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2024 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month. And I have just one quick follow-up that I must read, unfortunately. While our mayor has unfortunately declined to sign the proclamation for LGBTQ Pride Month, the rest of the City Commission and the broader Deltona community stand resolute in support of our LGBTQ residents. We not only recognize but also celebrate the vast contributions and the vibrant diversity the LGBTQ community brings to our city. We are committed to building an inclusive environment where every person is valued and embraced. This decision by the mayor does not reflect the values of our community, which prize itself on welcoming and supporting all residents. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we're going to go ahead and start with public forum, please.
Michael Williams, please.
I think I still remember how to do this. I haven't been to a City Commission meeting in quite a while, but I think you're supposed to say who you are and where you live. I'm Michael Williams, and I live at 2889 Cottageville Street. So that's my disclaimer. It allows me to make the presentation. Actually, it's not so much of a presentation, but really a big thank you. And that big thank you goes out to the city of Deltona for embracing the unveiling of the Dr. Martin Luther King bus, which we will do on June 19 at the Deltona Center. How this came about, it's a project we've been working on for quite some time, the African-American Association, along with some other people. And at the Martin Luther King luncheon, when we showed the rendering, Commissioner McCool came up to me and said, "Mr. Williams, it really looks good." I said, "Well, how do we get this from point A to point B?" She said, "You need to talk to all the commissioners and get them on board." So I said, "Well, you know, I'm used to talking to people. That's not hard." So I did talk to all the commissioners, starting with the vice mayor and Jamie and Maritza, and on and on it went. And it came... When we came to the vote of it, it was a unanimous vote that they would approve the unveiling of the statue of Dr. Martin Luther King. We had a presentation at that time and had it up on the screen. But I just want to again thank the city, and this is to me what the city of Deltona is all about. I want to give a special shout-out, though, to Commissioner Vasquez because she really embraced it and took it to a level that I really hadn't thought of, or some of the committee folk hadn't thought of. And what I mean by that is she got the chamber involved in this. Deland Chamber is going to be heavily involved in this. There's going to be a ribbon cutting. We've got a program scheduled for that day. We're asking you to be in the park at the center by no later than 10:30 because there is going to be hundreds and hundreds of people witnessing this historic event, the unveiling of it. The program actually will start at 11:00. The mayor will bring greetings. We've got the young man who says, "I have a dream speech from Dr. King." He'll be presenting that. Maritza... I mean, Commissioner Vasquez will talk about the history of the Martin Luther King celebration in Deltona because she was one of the original members when Ms. Wheatley started it. And we don't ever want to forget Ms. Wheatley for what she did to help start that program. After the program, Commissioner Vasquez has gone out and got a major sponsor to have refreshments afterwards. I don't know how many they have because there'll be a lot of folk there, but that will come after the presentation. After the ribbon cutting, we'll also have a young lady named Ms. Flint from the Greater Faith AME Church who will sing Dr. King's favorite song, "If I Could Help Somebody," along the way. Ms. Flint will sing that song, and then pretty much we'll be over with, and we'll do the unveiling. The statue is in place. The American bronze out of Sanford did the work. The people there, we'll introduce them to Jennifer, who did a lot of the graphic work on it. We'll also introduce Jeremy, who did the foundational work for us on it. But the bus will actually be installed on the 17th, that Monday. We've got a way to cover it up until that time, until the unveiling takes place on the 19th, at that particular time. But again, I just want to say thanks, a big thanks to the city for really embracing us. Mr. Wickham, I just want to say thanks to you, too, because when we started all of this, you said, "Let me know what you need, and we'll get it done." And that's the city of Deltona that I love, okay? All the other stuff... But anyway, thank you so much for what you've done and what you're going to do, and we look forward to it. And if anybody needs me to send them their information, George Rafferty has my email address, and we'll send this out. But we do have a press release. We're expecting newspaper coverage, television coverage. It's going to be a huge, huge, huge event. Mark that date, June 19, which is actually Juneteenth, and we happen to have it on that particular day. Thank you very much.
Carolyn Hickerson, please.
Hello, everybody. At the last, I think, recorded commission meeting, Jody attempted to bypass state law and get the commission to consent to allow illegal land use at the Plaza of Howland in Cortland. He mentioned the address, but he failed to mention that it is the same property that he brags that he manages. So not only did Jody attempt to break the law by getting all of you to consent to change a C1, he had a conflict of interest in this matter, since the decision would enrich himself. The signage for the tattoo shop is already up, so it's clear that Jody made the deal with the business, even though zoning does not allow for this type of use. Thank you.
Charles Castro, please.
Good evening, everyone. This is a good follow-up to that from that young lady. Is it okay? Can I hand you a picture? Because I'm going to explain a few things, and maybe if you could see it.
Give it to the city clerk, please, and she'll make sure to distribute it to everybody on the dice.
So thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is my first time ever in one of these meetings, so I want to go over some notes here about who I am and what I bring to Deltona. So overall, I'm asking if you could please grant us a variance for the tattoo studio that that young lady just spoke about. With that, I'll state some facts about the business side of the studio. So once again, I'm Charles Castro. I own Tiger Tattoos, co-owner with my business partner, Rob Zambran. Rob isn't here right now. This is Rob and I's second location. Rob is deaf and works for NASA for 13 years. And I say deaf because we make sure that all our studios are ADA compliant, and we are very inclusive to everyone. I have several business degrees and currently pursuing my PhD in business. My background involved the corporate side of luxury spas with brands such as Waldorf Astoria, Rosen, Marriott, et cetera. So the old stigma of tattoo studios is scary, not sterile, biker, gangster. Those days are over. So who we are, we're a very clean, safe, and professional environment. We deliver top-notch customer service, but most importantly, we take pride in public safety. On the surface, many people may think it's just a tattoo and piercing studio, but we also specialize in helping people recover from injuries and past issues that they'd want to forget about. A few examples are, we've helped military and law enforcement cover up tattoos that are not pleasant anymore and help them get the jobs or the career they look forward to. We've covered up former gang members who want to change their lives and no longer want to be affiliated with those type of tattoos. We cover up scars from surgeries and pregnancies. We've covered up tattoos from people that have cut themselves and tried to commit suicide, and we help them cover the past that they no longer want to remember. We tattoo women that have recently had breast surgery and don't have nipples now, so we tattoo fake nipples on them to help them recover during that process. Health and safety is our standard. Our standards actually meet and exceed the Florida Health Department. We use a Statham G4 sterilizer, which is the exact same machine that your medical hospitals use and your dentist use. We use Opticide and Mataside as sterilization tools. Those are the same hospital-grade that hospitals and dentists use. All piercing tattoos and needles are disposed properly in medical bio bins, which gets picked up every 28 days from a health department licensed transporter. I just want to show you the emphasis that we have on public safety. We have submitted all city inspections and passed with flying colors. We have been welcomed by the community, just about everyone until today, and the surrounding businesses with open arms, and everyone has seemed very excited and supportive of a tattoo and piercing studio there. Tattoo and piercing studio is the same thing. If a salon does permanent makeup, it's a tattoo license with a tattoo machine. It is the exact same industry. So again, I'm asking you if you could please grant the variance for us to open our studio. My family's lived in Deltona since 1998, and I'm hoping now we could have a local business here and contribute to Deltona. Thank you very much.
Sophia Jones, please.
Good afternoon. Thank you to the city of Deltona for having me. My name is Sophia Jones, but my professional name is Savannah Nuvo. I am an actor, dancer, makeup artist, costume designer, drag queen, and most importantly, a queer woman. I wanted to say thank you to the commission and the majority for passing the Pride Declaration for the month of June here in Deltona. I am recently crowned, as of Thursday, Miss Volusia Pride, and I'm here with my mister, Carl Luther King, to help uplift the voice of the queer community within all of Volusia County. I do believe that this is my first time being here, so seeing the city of Deltona core values of commitment, honesty, integrity, and human compassion is amazing, and it is amazing to see it established within this community. I wish that I could say that for everybody, but I am very, very grateful for the time being here, and I'm very grateful that you have decided to hear our voices today. Thank you.
Jim Dreese, please.
It's actually Dreese. Thank you. Jim Dreese, I live at 1389 Hayton Avenue in Deltona, and I own property here in Delan. I live in Deland. I have the property here. I represent PFLAG, which is a new group in the area. It is a countywide group. It's been around in the country for 50 years. The purpose is to... I'll read exactly. "It's an organization of LGBTQ+ people, parents, families, and allies who work together to create an equitable and inclusive world. We lead with love and we support families. We educate allies and advocate for social justice, equitable, and inclusive legislation and policies. We were founded 50 years ago. There are over 300,000 people. We are in every state. There are 20 chapters in Florida. We started this chapter last August because we feel, along with your spirit of the resolution, there needs to be more acceptance and more acknowledgement of the variety of our community. We don't represent just gays and lesbians. We are straight. Here tonight are many of our board members. The recipient of the proclamation was an appropriate recipient. He's a member of different groups, and he's also a member of our board. So we are inclusive, and we are dedicated to what your proclamation stated. We are committed to helping create an environment where each individual can feel respected, welcomed, and undermined." I just want to thank the commission. I know that you often take a lot of flak for different things, but you really did something right. I'm only sorry it wasn't unanimous, but thank you very much. I know those that are part of my community, and I have a gay son, and he would very much appreciate that if he were here. He lives in California. Thank you very much, and we really appreciate your passing this proclamation.
Heather McLean, please.
Good evening, and thank you to the city of Deltona commissioners and mayor for hearing us speak tonight. My name is Heather McLean. I'm a resident of Deland, but I am the Executive Director of Deland Pride and the Vice President of Volusia Pride. I'm here tonight because I am so thankful to the commission for passing the proclamation for Pride Month. It means so much to the people in the community who are LGBTQ and who don't feel like their voices are always heard. I also wanted to take a moment to, again, note that the gentleman... I also wanted to take a moment to, again, note that the gentleman who came up here to receive that proclamation is Scott Mena. He is a dedicated and loyal member of our organization and has worked extremely hard and has lived in Deltona for many, many years. I'm sure that this was a really special moment for him tonight to be able to get that support in his hometown. So again, thank you. I just, one of the things, you know, again, I wish that this had been unanimous. One of the things that you've already heard is that we just held our Volusia Pride pageant this last week, and when we were posting about it on social media and some of the, you know, countywide public groups, we did get some feedback. We'd see comments like, "Why are, why are the gays always pushing this in our face? And why do I constantly have to hear about Pride Month? Why does that have to happen?" And when it's straight Pride Month and that kind of thing. And well, this is a great example, so thank you so much for explaining why we need this, because we still do need to show that we are being heard, we are here, we're not going anywhere. We live in every community all around the world. So when people ask me, "Why do we need Pride Month? Why do we need to have it recognized?", this is a great example, because not everybody supports us. We have dozens of laws in this state that have tried to harm our community, have tried to strip away our rights, and this is a great example. So thank you so much for that example. Thanks.
Kamaya Blackman, please.
My name is Kamaya Blackman, and I'm a resident of Delan. I'm Kanaka Malimahu. That is, I am Native Hawaiian queer, but most importantly, I am a parent. My family and I moved back to Volusia County from Hawaii in 2020, and we left Florida in 2015 because Volusia became a place where people felt comfortable being openly racist.
Excuse me, ma'am. I don't mean to interrupt you. Can you speak a little bit louder, or you can lower the mic to your...
We left Florida in 2015. It was because Volusia had become a place where people felt comfortable being openly racist and homophobic. When we moved back here in 2020, we were very surprised and about Volusia County having a strong LGBT presence. Visibility is very important. When you're a minority amongst minorities, it is extremely important. We moved back and we felt very safe here. And so I just wanted to express how I feel about this welcomeness and this inclusivity. And I'd like to thank the commission for, the majority of the commission for your support in declaring June as Pride Month. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Teri Ellis. So, you know, it's really funny how sometimes you find yourself in the middle of a moment. And I had no idea that, you know, this is going to happen today. We talked about Martin Luther King, we've talked about Pride Month, and I'm here tonight to talk about a deaf athlete. The lady's name is Nyirania Bar Miller. She lives here in Deltona. She's been on the news. She's been featured in West Beacon about, because she's a deaf hurdler. She won the 100-meter hurdles this year, state championships. She was second place for the 200 and 400 meter high hurdles, and that was only because she probably would have been first, but there was a misfire. And so they got called back twice. And so she actually went, ran three races, two races twice. So she, but she still won a place in second. Along with her talent, she's also a scholar. She graduated with a Magnum cum laude from university high school, and after that, she won a four-year scholarship to St. Thomas University in Miami. So I wanted to bring that up tonight because, along with her accomplishments and her academic accomplishments, she's received several awards. Tonight, she's being honored for the Volusia County sports, high school sports. That's why her family couldn't be here. Her next goal is to participate as a member of Team USA at the World Deaf Athletic Championships in Taiwan. And that is going to be in July, so we're trying to raise money. And I left something for the commissioners, but I'm asking for, if the commissioners, if you feel so led, if you would contribute to the GoFundMe, and anybody in the, who is listening on TV or in the audience. Again, her name is Nyirania, N-Y-R-A-A-N-I-A Bar Miller. So you can find her by, you can find that GoFundMe by searching. But please, you know, help a very deserving young lady. And back to what I said at the beginning, you know, to be here right now talking about inclusiveness, you know, talking about, about Pride Month, and we, and there's a bust from Dr. Martin Luther King, and I'm talking about a hairy impaired athlete. You know, our community is strengthened when we embrace and listen and include everyone in our community. That's what the United States is. We're a community of immigrants and people from somewhere else and people that are different from other places. So it's, I found myself in the middle of this moment, and I'm very proud of Deltona today. So I hope that those of you, I do have some flyers, so if anybody wants to see me in the audience, but I hope that you will reach out and help this young lady to recognize her goal, because she's very deserving. Thank you.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, thank you for lending me your ear for a few minutes this evening. My name is Rose Marie Latham. I stand before you this evening as a mother of three, a grandmother of six, a nurse practitioner, a public servant, as your Democratic candidate for state representative for District 29. Ladies and gentlemen, we are at a critical moment. Our leaders and some of our great institutions are failing us. Why? In some cases, it's because they're bad or unethical, but often, it's because they have taken us to the wrong objectives. And in choosing the wrong objectives, we create problems in our lives, problems that we everyday Floridians must bear. And so my question to you this evening, all of you, is this: Are we choosing the right objectives for the right reasons? And why? It is my belief that the job of an elected official is to lead with an open heart and with an opened mind. It is to recognize the people of our community as they are, not who we want them to be. Recognition is important. In a healthy society, people need to be recognized. Recognition is how children of the next generation can look up to us and have the belief instilled inside them that they too can achieve anything they put their minds to. It is important to be seen, for our differences are not what keep us apart, they are what unite us as one people. They are what make us Americans. And yet, people of every minority background have had to fight to be recognized at some point in our history, and the fight to be seen persists this evening. The proclamation being discussed this evening isn't about parades, it's not about rainbows, it's about being seen, it's about being heard, and it's about being accepted. It's about taking the steps to eviscerate hate. It's about the right to love who you want to love and the right to self-expression. It's about choosing the right objectives for the right reason. Thank you.
Just Carter, okay. My name is Carter Vance. I'm a member of the community, and this is my first time speaking at anything like this. So this is, isn't the first, and it definitely won't be the last time that the panel will hear about the widespread desire for Pride Month to be properly represented by the city and council. I know it's been said for years already, the serious implications of ignoring such a vulnerable group of people. It's not new information to know that LGBT individuals are more at risk in many ways, though some may not know that, according to the Trevor Project, over half of LGBT youth report being verbally or physically harassed because of their identity, and roughly 41% of young transgender people have seriously considered suicide in the past year. I won't go into all of that, though, because it's obvious that's never mattered to the government unless it's benefited them. It's never mattered how many parents will lose their babies, how many lives are cut short just because they wanted to be themselves in a world that wouldn't accept them. I know when it comes to government, all that matters is money and pushing an agenda. So I urge the council to please consider expanding representation for Pride Month, if not for the empathy of the citizens you're supposed to be representing, but for the hundreds of thousands of dollars in possible revenue. It's important to understand that your citizens want to participate and spend money on Pride-related things. Your choices are actively driving away people that will work and provide revenue for your city, and I definitely intend to be one of those people who refuse to stay and help fund a city that doesn't support me. Choose to invest in your LGBT citizens, and you'll not only save lives, but also boost our city's prosperity. Ignore us, and you'll lose not only revenue, but also whatever respect we have left to give.
Hello, I'm Robyn Memna. I, I'm a resident of Lake Helen, but I grew up here in Deltona. I serve as co-chair for Lake Helen Pride and on the board for the Enterprise Museum, both that proudly serve the people of Deltona. I want to thank the majority commission for acknowledging Pride Month, and just point out that regardless of how you feel about it, by signing that proclamation, you are telling the LGBTQ community that you see us and that Deltona is a safe place for them. And I can't believe that a mayor of a city wouldn't want its citizens to feel safe and heard. And it's not too late to send that message. Thank you.
Hello, board. I hope this is close enough. Okay, there we go. I want to thank you so much for being able to represent this special month for us. It means a lot to me because I have lived in Deltona for over 20 years, and I can tell you, back in the early 2000s, that there wasn't really that much representation or anything like that, but most of us had to hide who we were. I went to Pine Ridge High School, and I remember having to fake, have a girlfriend who actually turned out to be a lesbian, just to kind of hide any gossip of anything of me being gay. And it's unfortunate that me as a youth back then, I had to do that. And as time has changed, things have changed as well. But what has been really interesting was, and I'm thankful for, is that things start to grow. And most of all, that my wonderful family of Delan Pride start to grow, especially with what happened at Pulse. It all started with Pulse. And what's happened with this group is that they have reached to so many people, and I, I used to be Mr. Delan Pride. And what was really interesting was how a lot of the people in the community were pretty much shocked that there was any Pride event going on in Delan, which even back in the early 2000s, would never have imagined any of this happening. And what we are is, we're here to help have that inclusion, have that support, show that love to every single person. And it's not just the people of the LGBTQ+ community, but we also have so many people within the spectrum, people who are ADA. And it's been so nice to be able to have that open space for everyone. And we're, you know, we're trying to get things going here in Deltona, and we're having a Rainbow Cinema Club, which I want to thank Enterprise Museum for that. But we're really trying to make things, you know, happen and change. And, you know, when people say like, "Oh, why isn't there a straight, you know, month", or whatever, I'm like, "Well, how many, like, please name me a country that straight people are persecuted. Please name me one. There are none. The ones that are persecuted are those that are part of the community of LGBTQ+." So for Deltona to be able to do this, I appreciate you doing this for us. I know that especially for the youth, it means so much to them, because they sometime, people think that they don't pay attention to what's happening in politics or stuff like that, but they do. They really do. And it does affect them. And we see examples of, for instance, a lot of the youth that we hear that, and their lives, because they don't feel that they have any support. We don't want that to happen here in Deltona. We really want, especially the youth, to feel supported and loved. So, thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate this proclamation, and it means so much to me and so many others. So thank you.
I didn't really, Rob Trombetta from Golden Arm Road. I didn't prepare really anything for today, because I really didn't know what to expect I've gotten a lot of feedback on, from social media on what's happening with, with the Pride event, and it's caused me to think why, one of the reasons why we have Pride. And one of, one of the things is that you may not understand it, you may not feel it, but I grew up in a time where I had to hide who I was. I grew up in a time where there wasn't any Pride event, there wasn't anybody that showed Pride. I grew up in a time where kids like me thought of committing suicide on a daily basis. I don't want to go back to that time. And if you think that that's hyperbole, well, look what's happening around us. One of our, one of the major parties in America, their platform says, states explicitly, "Marriage is only for a man and a woman." Now, I'm married. I've been with my partner 45 years. We were able to get married about 14 years ago, or something close to that. I don't want to lose that. Today, something happened to me that it's never, hasn't happened probably in 40 years. I'm on the phone with somebody, and I'm explaining to that person what is going on, and that person says to me, "What do you, the queers want?" I, I had that person repeat it four times, because I was like dumbfounded, dumbfounded. Person says to me, "Well, you guys call yourselves queer. Well, I can call myself whatever I want, but doesn't give you license to call me that. You don't call, use the N-word for black people. There are all kinds of slurs that you don't use." So if you think homophobia is dead, if you think it's, it's, we have our rights and we shouldn't do anything else, you know what? We fought, nobody gave us rights. Nobody said, "Here, gay people, you have your rights now." Gay people fought for those. Gay people fought for those rights. They rallied for those rights. They marched for those rights. And we will not, Mr. Mayor, we will not go back. Understand that. We are queer, we're here, get used to us. This is the, this is the 21st century. Every group, don't be surprised, every group, every minority group is in fear today for their future. I don't want to go back to the 50s where I thought about committing suicide. I'm so, so pleased with my friends here who are supporting, who are gay supporters of gay people, and I thank them. Thank you, six commissioners, for supporting this proclamation. Mayor, shame on you.
Dr. Caroline Shine, please.
Good afternoon, and thank you to the mayor, vice mayor, city commissioners, staff, and attendees for giving me this opportunity to speak as the chair of the Deltona Juneteenth Committee. Our church celebrated Juneteenth in a very intimate way on last year, but this year we rise to celebrate it as a historical, community-wide celebration, inclusive of all who would join. As you may know, driven by Mrs. Oprah Lee, a retired teacher and deaconess in the AME Church, often described as the grandmother of Juneteenth, other agencies, Juneteenth was signed into law as a federal holiday on June 17, 2021. And in May of this year, Deaconess Oprah Lee received a Presidential Medal of Freedom for her role in bringing this holiday to fruition. And even though the Emancipation Proclamation was openly announced for January 1, 1863, it was in Texas and Florida that it was silenced for nearly two and a half years and had to be enforced by visitation. The Juneteenth Day is etched in the minds of our citizen, and in the past, it was only celebrated privately. For the past few years, our citizens have been traveling to neighboring cities such as Delan, Deltona, Daytona, and Sanford to celebrate the event, and we pour a many of our resources into their success. But this year, by the grace of God, the holiday is being openly celebrated in our community in the city of Deltona. You are making a powerful statement and embracing the activities forthcoming in our community. You've heard about the Darth Martin Luther King bus that will be unveiled on Juneteenth. Then we will be traveling over to Greater Faith AME Church on Deltona Boulevard, where the Bishop Richard Allen, the mother of all African-American denominations of this country, our church, and over to New Hope Church, where Pastor Bradley and Minister Bradley are the founders of the largest black church in the history of Deltona for the celebration. As you heard, we will be expecting many guests from inside and outside of the city attending. So it is fitting that the AME Church, which was established in 1816, and as a daughter of Reverend Jerena Lee, the first woman preacher, AME preacher, would be at the forefront to chair this event. So the members of the Deltona Juneteenth Committee, we give glory to God for His providence towards us, and just as Christ emancipated us from slavery, He reconciled us to God. And we know that the Juneteenth is a testament to delivering God's power. And with that being said, help us make this a memorable moment, a legacy for all of us, our children, and support us with your presence, your promotion, and your support, and expedite these necessary things that need to take place. We will be celebrating June 19, June 22, and June 23, these events. Thank you so much for your support.
Tara DiRico, please.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Tara DiRico, District 3. Many important and heartfelt words said tonight, so I, I'm humbled to be following that because that's hard to follow, but, and not to take away from some of the speakers tonight, but I do want to take a moment to say thank you to Glenn. I think this is Glenn's last official commission meeting, sitting, sitting to the right side of the room. I want to thank you for a job well done, and I appreciate the level of calmness and maturity that you brought to our meetings. I appreciate you stepping in and stepping up when not too many other people would. And I appreciate you keeping our city afloat. I appreciate your patience while our city searched for a permanent city manager, and I wish you well, and I look forward to seeing you on the left side of the room at our next meeting. Thank you, Glenn.
Nick Ducharme, please.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Nick Ducharme. I'm a resident of Delan. My husband, David Roberts, and I are the advocacy co-chairs for Deland Pride. Mayors and city commissions have a duty to represent their entire community, as you did tonight by passing this proclamation. Thank you for that. In this modern era, as people become more and more comfortable with coming out, it is no longer possible to deny that a significant portion of every community in the United States identifies as LGBTQ plus. The Gallup polling data published this year shows that 7.6% of US adults identify as LGBTQ plus, and that more than one in five US Gen Z adults identify as such, too. June Pride Month has been a national and worldwide staple for several decades now, and here in West Volusia, Pride Month proclamations are nothing new, shocking, or political. In 2022, Delan's Republican mayor at the time, Bob Apgar, signed a citywide Pride Month proclamation. Since then, Delan's new Republican mayor, Chris Cloudman, has signed a Pride Month proclamation annually. Furthermore, Delan city officials have read the proclamation aloud in public annually since 2022. It did cost the city of Deltona essentially nothing to join your Delan neighbors tonight in issuing this proclamation. Meanwhile, I'm sure that members of the LGBTQ community here in Deltona will feel acknowledged and respected by their local government as human beings. Symbolic actions like a proclamation can give hope to those who need it and can even reduce the risk of self-harm. The officials of this city potentially have saved lives today by doing whatever was necessary to make this Pride Month proclamation a reality. Thank you for doing right by LGBTQ plus Deltonans and by all Deltonans who love and support them. Have a good day.
Courtney Cross Burgos, please.
Good evening, everyone. Courtney Cross Burgos, Twin Lakes, Deltona. I wanted to say that I'm proud of Deltona for being inclusive. I'm sorry that it wasn't unanimous. We moved here from Jersey and New York over 30 years ago when we first moved to Delan, and it was a very strange beast with all the racism and intolerance. And then we moved right over the county line into Lake Mack, and first weekend there, up on the big tree was a sign for a KKK meeting at the lake down the street. I never saw anything in my whole life like that. Coming to Deltona, I do find it's very much more inclusive, and Delan is better now. So I am proud to say that I live in Deltona and that we are trying to include everyone. I did want to say, though, I am a little disappointed with our citizens, myself, the commissioners, mayor, with the social media. It's been absolutely insane. And, you know, here we are, Pride Month, and people are calling out one of the mayor's friends for having HIV and all this stuff, and tested positive, which none of it's true. People are going after Jody Lee. And, you know, he and I are not the best of friends, but, you know, I can't blame him for wanting to come back for some of the comments that are being made online. But you made a nice comment, very nice comment online, I'm sorry, Davison. But I think, except for answering factual statements or questions online, you guys need to stay out of it because this is really getting insane. The stuff that people are saying, the hurtful, incorrect things that people are saying online about everybody is just very disheartening and makes me not glad to be a Deltonian to see that kind of ignorance, plain-out ignorance towards everybody, that, you know, just blatantly accusing people of things with no facts, no proof. They do it to the mayor about his financial stuff, Jody Lee with his violence and bad temper. And Dana, I was very saddened by Dana because usually she's pretty stand-up, and she, I think, tried to stir the pot a lot this past week on a lot of things, and I was shocked at that because she's normally very helpful. Anyway, I just wanted to say yay to Deltona for Pride Month and boo to Deltona for Facebook.
Kathy Bryan, please.
Good evening. Kathy Bryan, Deltona. Just to note, if anybody watches later, yes, you say your name, but you don't have to say your address anymore because not everybody wants to give out where they live, so that was for... As the mother of a bisexual girl who stood up at this podium and shook in her boots to bring the city awareness on Pride Month, what it means to be a member of the LGBT, I will get it wrong, LGBTQ plus community, sorry, kid. It's a very proud moment for me, and I want to thank everybody who's turned out in support of this. This is what, this is what she was looking for. I can't believe that it wasn't unanimous. And I'm going to tell you this, this is not a partisan thing, and it should never be a partisan thing. There's extremists on this side, and there's extremists on this side, and I'm not happy with everything our governor's done. There's other things I am happy with. I don't belong to one party or the other, so let's not get, let's not get a big political stir. How many of you guys here have ever felt left out? How many of you were picked on as a kid because you were shy, awkward, maybe you hadn't, maybe you weren't the best-looking thing? I was. It's not a good feeling. Nobody, nobody should be excluded because of the way they live their lives, as long as it's not harmful to others, which I can't say that Christians, non-Christian science, Scientology people are. Anyways, enough about that, because you know that mental health people, I'm so glad you did a proclamation for them, because that's another group that doesn't get enough recognition, they don't get the help they need. So welcome to the fold, everybody. Tattoos. How many of you guys out there have a tattoo? I don't have a tattoo. Raise my hand. But, you know, both my daughters have them. I know a lot of people, it's like, like the guy said, it's not, it's not just biker gangs in this filthy joint down the street. However, if there's, if there's underlying stuff with, you know, the stuff that's going on that shouldn't be, if there's ownership and somebody's going to be making money off of it, who sits on the dais, I don't know. I haven't done the research. All I'm saying is that make sure you've done your research before you come up here and say stuff. Same thing with social media. I'm going to agree wholeheartedly with that. But for the person that signed the proclamation, thank you. Agree, disagree? I don't care. It doesn't matter. People are people. You believe what you want to believe, I'll believe what I want to believe, but until somebody shows me that they're a truly bad person because they're out murdering people or animals or other of that stuff, love them.
Matthew Shaw, please.
Good evening, Matthew Shaw, commissioners, mayor, soon-to-be-gone city manager. You did a good job. Hey, I'm going to change the environment here a little bit, but kind of want to talk about my weekend a little bit, kind of what I did Saturday, and this will make sense. So Saturday was a pretty great day, you know, woke up, did some yard work, appreciate y'all, y'all done that before. I got a little workout in. And then my family and I left, and we went to eat at a nice little breakfast spot called Philly Diner, I don't know if you guys know about that place. It was pretty good, first time there. Strolled into the downtown area historic Garden District, kind of hung out there with my son and my wife. Stopped at a candy shop, Pat and Tony Sweet Things, got a milkshake for my wife and got my son a lime icing. Went to the AAA pawn shop to grab some supplies. So it was a great day, right? He's like, what is this guy talking about? You know, but what is it, what is it missing? Well, I started my day in Deltona, but I ended my day in Delan, right? And basically, what I'm saying is, I believe that Deltona can do a great job by creating a downtown area, because the people are here, the numbers are here, right? Financially, it makes sense. And I really think that we should put a committee together to get that in place. It's always been an idea, an ideal, but why not actually get that to start happening? It doesn't need to be a Daytona One, it doesn't need to be downtown Delan, it does not need to be downtown Sanford. I think it needs to be what Deltonians want, right? What's here, so we can spend the money here, right? All your money's not going to be spent here, but maybe we can give an opportunity for some local businesses, right, to thrive here, right, to feed back our town instead of these other towns. Other towns are great, but, you know, the mayor of the borough is like, well, we're putting it downtown in to help, you know, Deltonians. Well, we should be helping ourselves, I believe, by keeping the money, I guess we call it, in the family. I believe by, you know, creating a downtown, you know, giving business opportunities to local residents here, you know, allowing people maybe to potentially have an incubator so when the downtown is ready, you know, we know those businesses are proven to be successful, and they can move in and they can do well, you know? So I know it's an idea that has been kind of been bounced around, but I would love to see a committee that's, you know, put together to be able to, you know, get the infrastructure, get the groundwork, you know, put together so the town can see some success there. You got to think about, if you have a family, I have young family, so that's why I invested here, you know? Why should, you know, the youth come back to Deltona? You know, like, what is, what's here for them? If they graduate school, like, what are they coming back to? Are they coming back to somewhere that they can enjoy, live, and have a good time? Or do they not want to go back to their hometown? I'll be honest, I came from a small town, and I didn't necessarily want to go back to the small town because it was very backward thinking. They weren't forward-thinking in, you know, what they wanted to do, or just, you know, the ideas that would help promote a successful town environment. So anyway, hope that means something and it makes sense to folks, and maybe we can put a committee together to start that process. So commissioners, thanks for listening. Public thanks. You all have a wonderful day. God bless.
Gail Barr, please.
Hi, everybody. I've been, my name is Gail Barr, and I've been a resident since 1981, so I've been here a long time. I've seen a lot go on, a lot of good and some not so good. I want to first thank all the veterans who served us, so, served so that we can have our freedom, so we can get up here like tonight and speak. So thank you to the veterans. I want to thank the commission for representing all of the residents in Deltona. I think everybody should have signed, I think the mayor should sign it, should have signed it, and should rethink and represent all of the residents of Deltona, since everybody... since everybody pays taxes to Deltona, including your paycheck. So I think everybody should have signed that. I don't have any children that are gay, but I know people who do. So, and they are so loved and so loving, and they love everybody. One of the things that was mentioned in one of the last meetings was about scholarships. And I think we should have fundraisers to promote, to get money for the scholarships. And that can include events at the center. For example, like, there was a Mother's Day brunch that was excellent, and I'm sure that money was made. Maybe a food truck event. Maybe the food trucks can donate some money. But I think there should be some events at the center to raise money for the scholarships. Okay, now, this is the one thing that really bothered me, and it was with the vice mayor. Having a friend that wants the business. I don't care what kind of business it is. I don't, it doesn't bother me that it's a tattoo shop. I don't care. But I don't think that he went about it the right way to get the zoning changed for that. If I wanted something, I would have to go through proper channels. Or can I come to you? And would you change it for me? No. So I don't think that is the proper way to do it for anybody. Whatever the background story is, I don't care, but it was done improperly. And I think that everybody should have the same chance at rezoning and go through the... We have rules, and there are rules for a reason. And we should follow it. Everybody should follow it. Nobody is above the law, as we've been hearing. Nobody. Okay, now, I read this online today. "I'd rather be excluded for who I include than be included for who I exclude." And that we have to do everything with a good heart and expect nothing in return, and you will never be disappointed. Remember to keep smiling and stay positive for our city.
Charlene Smith, please.
Charlene Smith, District 2. I just wanted to touch on why there's Pride Month to begin with. The origins of Pride Month can be traced back to the Stonewall uprising on June 28th, 1969, when LGBTQ patrons at the Stonewall Inn in New York City fought back against a police raid sparking days of protests and riots. The pivotal event galvanized the movement and inspired the first Pride March in 1970, which aimed to commemorate the Stonewall riots and advocate for LGBTQ liberation. And just a side note, the only arrests that were made at that raid were people that were cross-dressing. So now Pride Month is held to commemorate those riots, honor the community's struggle for equal rights and visibility. It serves as a time for them to come together, celebrate their identities, culture, achievements, while also reflecting on the ongoing pursuit of equality and justice. It also serves as a time for the community to unite, express pride in their identities, and advocate for their rights. So let's fast forward to today. Just last year, our state representative had a temper tantrum on the state floor because he thought that transgender LGBTQ didn't deserve the same rights, and they were demons and imps and all, you know, all these other things. And now we've moved to present day where you, Mr. Mayor, don't want to sign this proclamation, for whatever reason. It's just ironic that just a couple months ago, you were willing to defend a proclamation for a cult that destroys families and traffics children. And in your defense of that, you said, "My goal as mayor of Deltona is to be inclusive of all residents and bring us together, not pick apart differences." So let's see if you can hold up to those words. And for all the cis heteros out there that are clutching their pearls, saying that you're not getting your own month. Every month has been your month for years. So have a seat. Thank you.
Brandy White, please.
Brandy White, Deltona. I actually came today to address some of the social media buzz and get some things cleared up. But first and foremost, I wanted to say, whoever set up the table in the back, awesome job. It is back into compliance. I love it. Everything's there. I can read front to back, right out of the book. So props to whoever put that back into place. Hopefully, we can next work on this silly little decorum policy that you still have on here that's unenforceable and constitutionally void, really. But that's something for another time. Also, if we could have another discussion on the overabundance of taxpayer money we're wasting on these fine gentlemen over here, they could be out doing something better with their time. All right. That was such a small, easy, little fix, and it made more than just myself happy, by the way, because I talked to a couple people about it. So let's talk about small, easy fixes. There's a discussion that has been brought up regarding the insert in the water bill and how we often see it, for those who are on the later billing cycle, right? We see it at the end of the month when everything's already done. So there was some concerns about, is there a way to kind of fix this? Seems easy enough. I get there's a billing cycle issue, and so that could make it a little bit hard. And also, it was brought to my attention that putting it maybe a month in advance could also cause some problems with scheduling changes. I'd like to thank my commissioner in District 1 for being the only one to respond regarding the concern that was brought forward. And I'm hoping we can see something move on that. It's such an easy thing to address. I don't know what the solution would be, but the suggestion online that is if it's not something that can be fixed because it's staggered like that, maybe just let's save the money and not put it in there at all because it just seems really wasteful for those of us like myself who get it at, like, the 27th of the month. So like what happened this month is already done and gone. Moving on from that, speaking of supporting things, Deltona Farmer Market that went off in May. Unfortunately, I had another event in Eustis, so I didn't attend, but I did go back and review all the footage and the photos. And apparently, it was a huge hit, very successful. They're doing it again in July at the center. I believe they're looking for some type of city sponsorship to kind of help this for the community grow. So I'm hoping to hear from you guys that you would be supportive of helping the community grow if somebody's willing to put in the effort to make it happen. I mean, I think that's something that everybody could enjoy. Last and obviously not least, we keep hearing about the issue with the zoning and the tattoo shop and all the other rumors that are circulating. I'm just going to throw this out there for anybody who wants it. If you truly believe that there was an impropriety at the last meeting or that there is currently some type of malfeasance, because what is described is considered malfeasance, if you honestly, truly believe that that has occurred or is occurring, your job is to reach out to the Florida Commission on Ethics. Coming here does nothing. Talking about it online does nothing. If you truly believe that's happening and you truly want some accountability, you'll do your research. You'll find the violation on the Florida Commission's website, and you'll file the form. Thank you.
Albert Bryan, please.
Good evening. You know, what an interesting week this has been. I got to read a couple quotes here. One, it says, "My goal as mayor of Deltona is to be inclusive of all residents and bring us together and not pick us apart." Another quote, "All residents of Deltona deserve respect. As mayor, I will always stand up to bigots and intolerance of others." You have failed miserably, mayor. As most y'all know, I work out at the flea market. I see all sorts of things out at the flea market. If you can't be nice, you shouldn't be out there at all. And mayor, if you can't understand that it is a right as a human being to live your life the way you want to, then you need to walk away from being mayor. You have no right to stand up there and tell anybody else how to live when you live the way you have. You are an intolerable person, from what I can tell. And that's no place in our mayor. None whatsoever. I have heard you stand right here and yell and scream at Heidi for less than what you've done. There is no excuse, none whatsoever. Thank you, Merza, for signing Pride Month. I appreciate that you do that. Troy, everything you said tonight, standing up here talking about it, I appreciate it. You went above and beyond. I wish I could say the same about our mayor. It's a shame you are so closed-minded in the way you look at this. I take pride in what everybody I meet in my city. I don't care what they are, who they are, what religion they are, what color they are. It doesn't matter. They're a citizen in my city. That's all that matters. That's all that should ever matter. When I work out at the flea market, they come to see what I do as a creative mind. Why should it matter who they are, what they are, what color they are, what religion they are, and/or otherwise? It should never matter, ever. For you to think otherwise shows how small-minded you truly are.
Lindsey Breones, please.
Lindsey Breones. That is 698 screenshots, just so you know. Hypocrisy is the audacity to preach. Hypocrisy is the audacity to preach integrity from a den of corruption. Hypocrite. A person who puts on a false appearance of virtue or religion. A person who acts in contradiction to his or her stated beliefs, feelings, or actions. Trash. Discarded matter. Refuse. A person or people regarded as being of very low social standing. With that said, you're a hypocrite. Your very own former PIO is a member of the LGBTQ. Okay? It's okay that he can do all of your dirty work for you on social media, but you don't even have the cojones to stand here, to stand here. You don't even have anything...
I've been very patient. I have not disrespected anyone.
You can't even sign something standing beside your own friend. Can't even stand beside them. And your other friend who's running for District 6 is also part of the LGBTQ, and he's your friend as well. Why can't you stand beside them, but they can do everything for you? Why is that? I'm waiting for an answer. Again, this is over 600 screenshots just on one person. And that is your former PIO. Do better.
Sarah Bryan, please.
Good evening. I had very much hoped to come up this year and congratulate the commission a job well done on Pride Month. Except, guess what? I can't do that now. I can't. And I find it's very discouraging that I cannot do so. And I want to explain something to you all up on that dais that maybe y'all don't understand. I grew up in a mild conservative family. Do you know what that means? I spent the first 19 years of my life having to worry about the fact that I was bisexual, and then, God forbid, coming out to my family, which, thank God, I have accepting parents, which y'all saw. Unfortunately, I still have to stand here because there are kids who are terrified of what their families are going to do. I have to stand here because there are adults who are ashamed and stigmatized for who they are. And I still have to stand here for people in other countries where it is illegal to be gay. They are illegal. They are criminals in their own place. And unfortunately, not everyone who says they are an advocate or an ally is actually an advocate or an ally. And they're using my community for their own gain. Therefore, I think some full transparency is in order. In January of 2024, at the District 2 selection meeting, a commissioner came up to ask me if Pride Month was in June or July. I stood here June 20th, 2022, and I stood here June 19th, 2023, and you're telling me they couldn't remember when Pride Month was? A simple Google search, by the way, would have been fantastic instead of asking the one person, the single, only person in this godforsaken city who has asked for Pride Month, by the way. This is, of course, the same commissioner who called my community "the alphabet contingency" when discussing litigation against the harassment of a gay man. You know, that's a slur that's used against my community, which I don't appreciate usually. In February of 2024, the same commissioner misspelled the acronym as LGBTQ instead of LGBTQ. Apparently, my mother can't do it either. And you know what? I might consider this a small infraction, but if you can call yourself an advocate and an ally, it shouldn't be any issue for you. In April of 2024, at the city manager meet and greet, the commissioner asked me to accept the proclamation as I've been championing it, to quote them. After I said no, they asked for suggestions. And when I tried to mention that there were organizations and charities, the conversation was immediately shut down with them saying, "Don't worry about it. No need to explain." And by the way, a 30-minute Google search gave me at least three viable options, including Volusia and Deland Pride, to accept the proclamation tonight. And yet, y'all still couldn't get anybody. Although, I do appreciate the person who stood up. I appreciate that. I would also like to know what I was supposed to have explained. While I don't owe an explanation, I said no because I find the hypocrisy on the dais to be too distasteful for me to accept a proclamation with a sitting commissioner and a mayor who does not have my community's best interests in hand, air, mind. And it's funny to me that the same mayor who in February took back a Scientology proclamation because he wanted to be inclusive of all residents and stand up to bigots and intolerance is now refusing to sign a proclamation to recognize a marginalized group that has to deal with bigots and intolerance every day. And if you've seen social media recently, Lord, you know. And by the way, weren't you the same mayor in 2023 who censured a previous commissioner because he harassed a gay man online? Wow. Wow. Or was that just because the pressure of a full crowd, like there is one tonight? By not signing this and standing firm in your decision to not accept this, you are pushing the narrative that you are not inclusive anyway. And to quote Melinda Manuel Miranda in a deleted song from Hamilton, "Congratulations. You have invented a new kind of stupid, a damage that will never undo kind of stupid. Truly, you didn't think this kind of... You didn't think this true... Sorry. You didn't think this kind of stupid... You didn't think this through kind of stupid." Are you sure this is how you want to leave your legacy? Because we, the city of Deltona and all of its citizens, are part of your legacy. I pray to God that no one ever has to come out to you. I feel sorry for them.
That ends public comment.
All right. We're going to go ahead and we're going to move over to ordinances and public hearings. A, Public Hearing Resolution Number 2024-20, Establishing the Preliminary Annual Rate Resolution of Stormwater for Fiscal Year 2024-2025.
Hello. This resolution before you is to establish the preliminary annual rate resolution for the stormwater assessment fee. And I would like to introduce Brian Mann's recovery. He has completed an in-depth evaluation of our stormwater capital needs He has completed an in-depth evaluation of our stormwater capital needs, as well as recommending our assessments for 2025.
For the record, Brian Mans from Govrates. Thank you, Julia. And let me start this presentation. So I, as most of you are aware, we had a workshop-
I'm sorry, could you restate your name again? Some other Commissioner's sitting here, and I meant who you were with.
Brian Mans from Govrates. And as most of you are aware, we had a workshop on May 13th to discuss this issue. And a copy of the, I guess, the workshop is posted on the city's website. The city has also put together an educational video about this item. But, you know, in the interest of time, I'm not going to go through the full presentation. I'm just going to cover some of the highlights, but certainly this is an item that's related to Deltona's public health and safety. So during the workshop, we talked about what the city's stormwater rates pay for. It's not just capital projects. It's really the whole operating, operations of the city, both the operating and the capital needs of the city. And there are a lot of different responsibilities that the department handles. And then the stormwater rates are an annual charge, and they have been $128 per year per ERU since 2019, or five years ago. They haven't been rightsized since various factors and market volatility have caused substantial inflation. So we talked about how stormwater infrastructure is often out of sight and out of mind, and Deltona has infrastructure that is, in some areas, over 50 years old. And Hurricanes Ian and Nicole overwhelmed the stormwater system and really stressed the need to improve it, the system, for the betterment of the residents. And here we have some pictures of the flooding impacts of Ian and Nicole. And these pictures really don't do as much justice as I think the educational video that's on the website, which really shows the devastation of these hurricanes. And I think that it's important to consider the potential impacts when your stormwater system is overwhelmed. It can lead to physical injury and loss of life, damage to individual properties and housing displacement, damage to grocery stores, gas stations, and other businesses supplying critical needs for daily life. Flooded roads can leave residents trapped on their property, can negatively affect the ability of residents to access businesses and healthcare facilities such as hospitals, and can negatively affect the ability of ambulances to reach properties. It can negatively affect the ability of suppliers to restock the businesses, you know, leading to empty shelves. It can lead to power outages, no electricity, and the inability to restore power. There are health risks due to water contamination, and we also talked about, you know, how flooding can result in increases to property insurance premiums. So there are a lot of negative effects associated with the extreme flooding that Deltona experienced. And here, during the workshop, we talked about how, again, you know, Deltona has some infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure, that's over 50 years old. And here's a picture of some sample stormwater pump station replacement needs. The city has begun the Teresa Basin Study, which is going to enhance the stormwater master plan and identify priority areas for stormwater improvements. The city does continually try to secure stormwater grants, different options, and has prequalified two firms with extensive experience in grant procurement. We talked about the capital program through fiscal year 2029, and I think it's very important to recognize that, just like any other utility, the stormwater system is regulated by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. And you have a permit, and your permit requires the system to be in adequate working order. And to the extent that the system, infrastructure failures were to lead to pollution, this could result in fines to the city and consent orders. And so then you may have to raise rates to not only fund the improvements, but also to fund the fines and also the associated legal expenses. And so it's not a good idea to be in regulatory hell. It's best to be proactive in doing what needs to be done in order to improve the system for the public health and safety of the residents. We talked about how the capital program had a mixture of pay-as-you-go funding versus debt financing. We talked about-
Do we feel like this is a safe question until the end, or should we?
It's towards the end. Make sure we see your mic is on, please.
We talked about how operating expenses have increased 70% since 2019, when the stormwater rates were last adjusted, and that permanent increase in costs must ultimately be passed through to customers through rates. We did talk about some sample cost increases since the stormwater rates were last adjusted. Here's one project, which was in 2019, compared to the estimated construction costs in 2019 versus construction in 2022. It was 144% higher. Here's another project, the Fort Smith Pump Station Improvements, where the cost in 2020 versus the construction in 2024 was 133% higher. We also talked about how there was a $2.5 million transfer from the General Fund to the Stormwater Fund in 2024. Basically, the Stormwater Fund is depleted, deferred maintenance is growing, and stormwater cost increases are paid from the General Fund, which reduces the flexibility for the city to address other priorities. And here we just have a chart showing how the revenues, which are represented by the red line, are insufficient to fund all the requirements of the stormwater system, which are represented by the bars. The stormwater system is unsustainable, and rates will just be higher as the capital needs are deferred. And as I mentioned, you know, again, this is a regulated system, and you do always have the risk of facing fines or consent orders if, you know, the city is not proactive in addressing this aging infrastructure. So the 2025 stormwater assessment, basically, when looked at as an effective monthly charge is about $3.50 extra per month. And assessments are adopted annually, so only the 2025 adjustment would need to be adopted at this time. So what would the proposed fiscal year 2025 stormwater rates pay for? And that was a question that was asked during the workshop. Any operating or capital costs paid through the assessment must provide a system-wide benefit or be part of a program that provides a system-wide benefit. So of the estimated $7.1 million that would be generated from the 2025 assessment, about 76% would be funding operating expenses, including needed systems, repairs, and maintenance. About 7.5% is just some existing debt that dates back to 2009, and it'll be paid off in 2029, at which point the system will have some additional debt capacity to fund improvements. And then the remaining 16.3% is for debt and pays you capital to start addressing these critical stormwater needs. And we talked about how with the rate adjustments, the revenues would meet our requirements, and that we would also have sufficient reserves, because we are, you know, dealing at this time with, a lot of times with, capital costs that are coming in a lot higher than initially planned, as we already kind of discussed earlier in this presentation. So by any standard, the rates that are proposed are both competitive and affordable. But a rate or bill comparison is not a report card on how well a utility is performing, because there are a lot of reasons why rates differ among utilities. So the recommendation is to adopt the proposed preliminary rate for 2025 of $170 per equivalent residential unit, which is $3.50 per month. If you consider it on a monthly basis, it's considered affordable, competitive. It's necessary to provide sufficient revenue to secure financing for the critical capital needs. And again, the stormwater rates have not been adjusted since 2019. And it's just, you know, as we talked about, it's good, it would be good to, you know, obviously to monitor progress and evaluate the need for additional rate adjustments each
We have Vice Mayor Jody Lee on the board.
Thank you, Mayor.
And before you start, and okay, and then Commissioner Harriet afterwards.
By any chance, you know, I understand we didn't do it last year. It probably should have been raised last year, and there was issues. Has any of this been discussed with the new manager that's coming in?
Glenn, if you want to answer that, please.
Because I mean, some of the people that are in charge will not be in charge next week. So I mean, we have a big budget thing coming up, and I understand how he does his budget process, the whole nine yards is going to change drastically in the city, I hope. We can cut out a bunch of stuff, but he's coming in next week. This couldn't have waited a week? I know there's a certain date that has to be proposed and in there. I get that, but I'm at, has this all been discussed with him?
I've talked to him just a little bit about it, and he knew we were coming forward with this tonight. We are going to be meeting with him next week. Again, this is just a preliminary, the first reading. The second reading, it could be, you know, changed or whatever, but I did talk to him about it. And when he comes in next week, this is one of the first things we're going to talk about, are these rate assessments and also our budget, because, you know, we got to keep moving. We have workshops at the end of June for the budget meetings.
No, thank you. I mean, I know it's only, it's $40 a year per house, roughly. I get it. I know it needs to be done. We should have probably did it last year. We don't want to, because of price increase for everybody across the city on taxes and everything else, I get it. It's crazy. I just, I want to make sure he's aware that we don't just keep doing stuff immediately, because, you know, there's a lot of money to be spent, and I want to make sure we don't hurry up and do stuff before he gets over, because if we vote on it, it's there, and I don't want to saddle him with stuff that he don't need to be saddled with.
Well, certainly, this is a multi-year plan, and he's going to be heavily involved in the next phases, and, you know, we're-
You're right, but what you projected up there is an increase every year over the next couple of years. Right. But that's what you're showing us. We're talking about an increase right now, not for the next, every year for the next five years. That's what you're showing us. The people that live in the city ain't going to like that. We're already discussing five years of increases in this. There's people that live on Social Security, stuff like that. Forty bucks will hurt. Might not hurt some people, but 40 bucks more, a couple dollars more every month, does hurt certain people. Not everybody, but it does hurt a lot. There's a lot of people that live on retirement, Social Security, stuff like that, and this small things affect them, because them small things add up. That's my concern.
Commissioner Harriet, and then Commissioner Vila Vasquez.
Thanks. I've got a couple of questions for you. The project list on Slide 12 that lists the Teresa Basin Drainage Improvements at $12 million. As you also mentioned, we haven't received that study back. So how did we get a project list totaling $12 million for a basin that this study hasn't been received back yet?
Phyllis Wallace, we can shed some light.
You want me to take it? Or you got it? Okay.
Phyllis Wallace, Public Works. That was based on Commissioner Harriet on previous capital improvement programs, understanding that the Teresa Basin Study is a multi-year process, as we all know. We would anticipate that our capital plan will be enhanced, somewhat modified, maybe some projects will be dropped out for maybe a different project. So we were taking dollars based on available data that we had, so that we could put together the most comprehensive budget, so that we were presenting something that was-
There was a placeholder in there for those projects, essentially.
It's a placeholder, but we didn't want to come in so far deficient, or already deficient. We needed to take what we had, but knowing that with the Teresa Basin, we may have some wonderful projects that come out that we can get additional funding from other sources. And as I said, some of those projects may drop out. Other projects may be enhanced to be a more encompassing project.
Okay. Thank you. To add some context to my question, I think that that $12 million number is significantly lower than what it will actually be. And that's why I think it's less important that the new city manager has intimate knowledge of it at this point, because I think we're going to still have to adjust or address additional funding sources in the next few years. Also, you had mentioned the regulation on the system and implied the importance of water quality. Are there any water quality projects included in that list? And if not, how can we change that?
Again, you want me to do it, Phyllis? Part of the, you know, the funds that we're anticipating is some of the projects that's going to be coming out of the Lake Teresa Basin Study. However, one of the projects that we're looking towards, and we've been talking to St. John's a little bit about, is doing a water quality project, you know, taking that water, some water from the Lake Teresa Basin over to our rib site and treating that water, and then putting it back in the aquifer. So, and that would help, you know, possibly relieve some of the flooding in the process. And that's, yes, there will be some water quality projects included, if that's what you're asking.
That's a great idea. I like the idea. But in order to know how we need to treat that water, we have to know what that water needs to be treated for. We have to have those benchmark water quality tests. I'd like to make sure that we have the flexibility within this project list to include those now, so that when we start developing those projects, we know the scope of work that needs to be done.
Yeah, and there will be, excuse me, sir, there will be some water quality testing going on, so when they figure out what projects they're going to use, because that, for a project where the rib site is now, was set up to treat river water, which has a lot of contaminants in it, et cetera, et cetera. So that all will be taken into consideration with this study, and we'll make sure that we flush out the projects that need to be done to alleviate, both alleviate the flooding and give us some water quality, so that we can discharge at some point to the St. John's.
Okay. I'm supportive of this, but to be clear, I'm asking that we find a way to include water quality sampling of all of our significant water bodies within the city, so.
Sir, any other questions on the dais? Do we have public comment?
I was going to actually, I knew I didn't put it on my list, but something came to Brandy White, Deltona, and just hearing all of this, it is, from my quick little research, true that we didn't adopt those increases, but we've had proposals, multiple years of proposals to increase it, pretty much every year. So my question is, knowing these things would still eventually need to be funded, have we done any homework or work on ulterior funding sources other than the public? Second question. In addition to that, I hear the need of funds and increases from the homeowners, but as we all are very much aware, a lot of our flooding issues have happened from developments. So-
Excuse me, Brandy. Whoever's cellphone is going off, could you please mute it?
So if we could maybe discuss, are there not any intentions to raise the impact fees to cover some of these, instead of just our pockets? Because we're not the ones technically contributing to the problem consistently, making it worse, right? So I get that we need to pay our fair share, but we're not the only ones. And all I keep hearing about is needing to increase our fees. I, in multiple years, have not heard the need or the process being done to also increase the other party responsible. Thank you.
So before we go to Vice Mayor Jody Lee and Commissioner Harriet, I did want to just make a mention, you know, one of the- just make a mention, you know, one of the, one of the things that I, that I wanted to have a very serious conversation with our incoming city managers is exactly that. The city of Deltona has probably one of the lowest, and you guys can check it, you don't have to believe what I'm telling you, but we have one of the lowest impact fees in the county. It hasn't been raised for a very long time. And one of the, one of, one of the things that I refuse to do is to continue going back to my residents, to the point that they are struggling, we, a lot of us are, given inflation, whatever, call it, whatever you want to call it. So unless we're looking at this from a, from a different approach, alternative, alternative funding, whatever it is, I feel that going to the residents for more money should be our very last, our very last ask. And I know I'm one of, of seven. It's very unfortunate that the person that was advocating for this the most isn't here today, but, you know, we, and as a matter of fact, we, we can't table this for, until everybody on this dais is here? No, right?
No.
Okay. So I, I just, I don't, I don't feel comfortable. Do we know, Glenn, or is, are we attaching some type of a project dashboard, which I did mention last time, so we can see how the money's being used for a lot of these water projects?
We are working on that dashboard to get it, to get it up and running. I want to, I wanted to work with the new city manager coming in to, he has some ideas too, so kind of want to, he, he'll be here next week on Monday, so I'll be working with him on that.
Vice Mayor Jody Lee, Commissioner Harriet, and then Commissioner Vila Vasquez.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, on a lot of these issues that you just wrote, brought up. It's the same thing, we, we haven't voted on this, or it hasn't been, before some of us got here, it hasn't been voted, it's been pushed down the road, it's been pushed down the road, and I, I totally agree with the aspect of charging the residents more. This has been pushed down the road, but developments in the city have not. We've had a ton of new developments, all these issues have been there, but when we get all these new developments, that's more money for houses that's been coming in. I understand we've incurred more costs, but all the different developments that come in, the Amazon, the whole nine, now they're not going to be getting tax breaks no more after this year. I mean, all these different companies have come in here, all these different housing developments have come in here. I just, if the projects were there before the housing development, and now we have these new houses with more taxes, I mean, we should be somewhere getting close instead of just raising the taxpayers' money again. I mean, I, I know we need it. And Commissioner Harriet, I agree with you with the water quality tests and everything else. We need the money. What are we doing with all our money? That's all.
Commissioner Harriet.
So, everybody said, I'm not going to repeat it, but I will add to it. The, the comment about addressing this with development is a very important question, but I don't think this is the place to address it. It needs to be addressed in our land development code, and I did just look and make sure that it was on my list, but stormwater within future developments is on my list for topics for the new land development, or the updates to the land development code. Also, dashboards sound great, but again, that's just more money and expenditure taken away from the already identified project list. So I'd like to not focus as much on that and focus on the projects. That's it. Other than that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Harriet, a second by Commissioner Vila Vasquez. Commissioner Vila Vasquez, you're also on the board.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Commissioner Davidson. This, the impact fee and the development issues, it's a different subject. Definitely needs to be brought up. Definitely, absolutely, but this is not the time for it. Our stormwater was affected before these storms hit us. After the storm, they got, I mean, even worse. And I understand, I've had a lot of residents come up to me and say, you know, you guys raised, I'm glad you didn't raise the rates last year, we can't do this, but at the same token, you have no idea how many people came to me and said, how dare you not raise those rates? My house was flooded. And because you did not raise those rates, my house will not get fixed. So you have to look at both sides, you know? Fortunately, District 3 was not affected as much. District 1, excuse me, I think was the most. And I have friends, a lot of friends in District 1, and I heard from them. And I was shocked when they told me, they were mad at me for not voting in favor of raising last year. So, you know, there's a lot of things that need to be done. Impact fees, absolutely, we need to raise them, no doubt about it. But we got to do it this year, otherwise we're going to keep, have to keep borrowing from ourselves. And I understand it's, it's not easy for a lot of people's budget, but if we do not raise it this year, next year is going to be worse. It's going to be triple, and it's going to be much worse. So, you know, just like we get blamed for, or the previous commissioner's getting blamed for not doing what we have the problems doing today, it's the same thing that's going to keep going, it's going to keep going down the road. So, you know, let's, let's work with it now and, and, and do the best we can to try to fix these problems. You get brand-new, you know, storm waters, and how long do they last? 10, 20 years? We don't have to worry about them anymore. So that is my reasoning for seconding your motion.
Can we please go for a vote? There's a motion by Commissioner Harriet and a second by Commissioner Vila Vasquez. Motion passes 5 to 1. This time, we're going to go to Public Hearing Resolution Number 2024-21, Establishing the Preliminary Annual Rate of Assessment of Solid Waste Trash Services for Fiscal Year 2024-2025. Julia Johnson, please.
Yes, hi. This resolution is to establish the preliminary annual rate for the assessment for solid waste. The solid waste collection system is based upon the operational needs and is funded by.
Guys, please, can we keep down the side conversations? Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Spended by fees levied to the property owners in the city. We have our longtime consultant here, Mr. Bill Redman. He has done a detailed analysis of the solid waste assessment and the numerous factors that affect the rate. He's here tonight to respond to any questions you may have. This is something we've gone over in the workshop.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Okay. Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Harriet and a second by Commissioner Vila Vasquez. We'll listen to the consultant, and more importantly, we'll listen to the residents as well. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. I'm Bill Redman with Redman Consulting Group, the city's solid waste consultant. I think I have, in the last, in the workshop, we went over all of the contract requirements that the city has with Waste Pro. The, okay. Do you, all right.
This is the same presentation from the workshop, correct?
I'm sorry? Yes, sir.
Yes, so I, I don't, unless the commission wants to see the workshop, the presentation again, I think we can, we can answer some questions, and then I'm going to go to the public for, for public record.
There was one change in the, when we did the calculations for the CPI, we could, the April tables were not out, so we had a 3.5% increase for CPI. When the April tables came available, we had a reduction in that, so it's 3.1. So we have a fuel reduction, and we have a CPI reduction. And of course, we can't do anything about landfill, that's the county, so.
Vice Mayor, you're on the board.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Redman, or, Julie, how much, I have a question. I know we get fines back from the, from the trash company when they mess up and everything else. Do you know how much we've got back last year?
Off the top of my head, I don't.
$27,000 over the, over the term of the contract. It averages out about $1,850 a month.
So we've got, you said how much, like $37,000 or something?
Something like that, yes.
Something like that? That's what we got back in fines from that?
Yes, sir.
Is that, does that money, where does that money go when it gets back to the city, Ms. Julia?
It goes here to the.
It goes back to the trash?
Mm-hmm.
It's a public fund? Okay. That's it, Mr. Red, I'm ready for the rest of it.
Is there any public comment?
Payment, not a requirement.
Brandy White, please.
Right, but it's a reduction. Right. Exactly.
This is what brought me here. Trash. Aren't you guys excited? So it brought me here, what, nine years ago? All right, so I got a little bit of a problem with what I'm reading on here, and the claim that you guys have made, unfortunately, that you have not increased the rates. That's not entirely true now, is it? Let's go back a little bit, okay? Let's go back to the year of 2018, when we actually increased it, dramatically by the way, to 2028. It's been that since 2019, which is why you're claiming no rate increase. However, let's dig into that rate of 202 from 2018. It included recycling. Now let's look at this. We haven't changed that rate, so we've still been paying the recycling fee, which, by your own records, was $77.50 per ton, with an estimated savings, your record, of $714,819 a year. Now let's just take that at the last five years that you've been collecting that recycling fee, but not paying it, right?
That's not any of that.
That's an estimated $3,574,095. So that is a rate increase, because we've been paying for recycling that we're not actually paying them for, because we canceled the service. So if we haven't been paying that fee, and we are going to quote that we haven't had an increase, I'd like to know what the current fund balance is, and if it's anywhere near $3 million. If not, we have a problem. In addition, we talk about the fuel and CPI reduction, which combined equals about 23% decrease, but only an 11% increase in the disposal cost component. So the math isn't mathing. So if you guys could maybe take a little break, go back into the notes, reassess this, and find out what our fund balance currently is, and if this is an actually necessary increase. Thank you.
That ends public comment.
Can we get somebody to answer that question, please?
When we took this project out for a RFP, we asked for two prices. We asked for prices for District Residential under the current service back then, or, and or with the current service for residential, plus commercial under the three-year statute of getting exclusive. At that time, the recycling was going to cost $25,000 a month to the city. The staff at that time, and the city managers at that time, asked Waste Pro for a reduction in price if we did, did not continue recycling. Our recycling price, that price came down to $10.25, therefore eliminating the price of, the cost of recycling, and therefore eliminating recycling at that time, and saving the city $25,000 a month at that, at that point in time. So this, the current price and the price at the beginning of the contract did not include recycling whatsoever, and it doesn't today.
All right, just, can we go for a vote, please? Motion passes 5 to 1. This time, we're going to go to Section C, Public Hearing Resolution Number 2024-22, Establishing the Preliminary Annual Rate Resolution Street Lighting Services for Fiscal Year 2024-2025. Ms. Johnson.
This resolution is to establish the preliminary annual rate resolution for the street lighting services. This is not for all residents, only the residents who are members of these street lighting districts.
I make a motion to approve.
There's a motion by Commissioner Harriet, a second by Vice Mayor Jody Lee. Commissioner Vila Vasquez, you're on the board. All right, is there any public comment? All right, can we please vote? That motion passes 6 to 0. Going to go ahead and go to D, Public Hearing Resolution Number 2024-23, Establishing the Annual Rate Resolution, Lake Magariti Aquatic Weed Control Services for Fiscal Year 2024-2025. Ms. Johnson.
This resolution is the preliminary annual rate for the Lake Magariti special assessment. This assessment district was established to provide the aquatic weed control services for Lake Magariti. The cost of those services is allocated to properties that will benefit from these services and will be levied to those property owners.
May I like to make a motion?
There's a motion by Commissioner Vila Vasquez.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Harriet.
Can I just, can I make a comment?
Yeah, please.
This service is requested by the residents there.
Correct.
Just to make it clear for everyone understanding.
And only they pay for it.
Correct.
Is there any public comment? Can we please vote?
I'd like to also add that this is, this is a phenomenal opportunity, and not just for aquatic weed control, but for, it, it can be done for a lot of different things that only benefit a small piece of the community. The community can come together, those neighbors can come together and advocate for these MSBUs, and it's a phenomenal way to, to receive, for the city to manage or provide a service to just the neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner Harriet.
Whether it be a lake, or streetlights, or anything.
Motion passes 6 to 0. Going to go to Section E, Public Hearing Resolution Number 2024-24, Establishing the Annual Rate Resolution, Nuisance Abatement Services for Fiscal Year 2024-2025. Ms. Johnson.
This resolution has established a nuisance abatement assessment to several properties. The properties and amounts are listed in the resolution, and just found out the one property has paid, so that number has changed. The total number is 43,698,000. The nuisance abatement assessment was established in 2018 for the collection of unpaid costs and expenses incurred by the city for nuisance and lot cleanup. This is an effort for the city to recoup the cost of cleanup that is a nuisance and a threat to public health, safety, and welfare.
Could I ask a question before anybody makes a motion? When did that number change?
Danny.
Can you read that number again, please? Thank you very much.
Danny Rock, Co-Compliance. That number changed a couple of months ago, but when we did the, pulled the data, it didn't reflect the payment. Before I came here, I want to make sure they were all taken care of, and there was a payment made.
So would it hurt if we table this until the next commission meeting, so the numbers are reflected correctly?
Is it going to help?
I'm just saying, I, I want us to get used to getting accurate numbers.
Nope.
Now, this is a preliminary on this subject, but we can get the run numbers straight once we come up the next time.
Yes.
Correct it in the final reading.
Commissioner Vila Vasquez.
Which was the one that you removed from the list? Do you know?
Yes, it's going to be 2751 Summerfield Street.
Okay.
That's a court right in the corner of Summerfield, New Mark. Correct. $4,685.
Okay.
They paid it off.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
There's a motion by Commissioner Harriet and a second by Commissioner Kowal. Motion passes 5 to 1. We're going to go ahead and go to Section F, which is Public Hearing Ordinance Number 05-2024, Amending the Comprehensive Plan of the City of Deltona by amending the capital improvement element providing for the replacement of the capital improvement project five-year schedule, planning, and development.
All right, good evening. Tonight, I'm going to go over ordinance number 05-2024 for the capital improvement schedule level of service report update. The CIE evaluates the capital facilities and level of service threshold required to support the city. support the city. The CIE is updated annually and is used for budget processes that have already been done. Solid waste. The city has a contract until 2025 to use Waste Pro as a solid waste hauler. The comprehensive plan has an adopted capacity of 8.6 pounds of solid waste per capita day, although it has remained around 3.04 pounds. The city has 697 acres of developed parkland, which will keep the city within the adopted level of service. Most of the 284 acres of undeveloped parkland is wetlands. Potable water. Water usage per residential unit has increased by one gallon in the last year to 170 gallons, and the city retains adequate water capacity to serve well above the level of service. Schools. Deltona is currently served by 10 elementary schools, three middle schools, and three high schools. It's important to note, Volusia County School Board is planning on rezoning three elementary schools to assist with their level of service. Their 2023-2024 level of service has not been released yet. It's not in your packet. I apologize, it just has not been released. And this is one of the options presented to staff to rezone. You're going to have 157 students from Timbercrest that will be sent to Deltona Lakes or Friendship Transportation. The city is approximately 41 square miles and over 450 miles of streets and roadways. These roadways are maintained by the city, county, state, depending on the actual roadway. These roadways are funded by impact fees, transportation bonds, grants, gas tax, and many other sources. This is the current acceptable standard level of service for the city per the comprehensive Stormwater. These are the level of service for stormwater quality and quantity. This is requirements for stormwater ponds, and they have to meet these four final site plans or plots. The city remains active in upgrading and maintaining existing stormwater infrastructure by retrofitting and upgrading. This is prioritized based on the list provided. While some stormwater projects intend to serve as maintenance, many of the stormwater improvement projects increase capacity. Wastewater. Most of the city is managed by septic tanks. The city has about 100 miles of wastewater pipes with two wastewater plant treatment plants. The comprehensive plan has an average of 284 gallons of domestic wastewater per day level of service. The city generates 177 gallons per day per household. The city is working to upgrade wastewater facilities by treating an extra 500,000 gallons of wastewater to promote economic development and provide an alternate to septic systems. The city has interest in expanding wastewater service capacity by engaging in cost-share arrangements called pioneer agreements with developers for the extension of sewer. The city continues to plan for the expansion of infrastructure to encourage commercial Staff recommends the city commission approve ordinance number 05-2024, amending the comprehensive plan by amending the capital improvement element providing for the replacement of the capital improvement project five-year schedule. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Villavasquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you know, is it confirmed that these schools are going to be closed out? That might not be a question for you, but...
If the students are going to be moved, is that what you're asking? We had, there was a Volusia County School Board meeting, I want to say last week, and they were still talking about it. It hasn't been completely confirmed.
Okay. But there are no more questions, may I like to make a motion?
We have Commissioner Harriet, but you can make your motion and then we'll listen to Commissioner.
I just have a quick question.
Sir, microphone.
In the ordinance that is presented in the agenda packet, it says that this is a requirement to do. Is this a statutory state requirement or one provided by our own comp plan or policy?
It's a statutory requirement.
Okay. Can I ask that you send that to all the commissioners, just whatever, what the language is?
I hereby move to approve ordinance number 05-2024, amending the comprehensive plan of the City of Deltona by updating the capital improvements elements providing for the replacement of the capital improvement project five-year schedule.
There's a motion by Commissioner Villavasquez, second by Commissioner Colwell, and do we have any public comment? All right, can we please vote?
Mayor, I think we have to read the ordinance if I'm not mistaken.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I didn't realize it was, it said ordinance, sorry about that. Ms. City Attorney, do you mind reading it, please?
Ordinance number 05-2024, an ordinance of the City of Deltona, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan of the City of Deltona by amending the capital improvements element providing for the replacement of the capital improvement project five-year schedule, finding conformity with state statute, providing for severability, and providing for an effective
Motion passes six to zero. There is no old business, we're going to new business. Request approval for state revolving fund amendment three to loan agreement WW641860 with Florida Department of Environmental Protection, specific to the Alexander Avenue reclaimed water augmentation project, which is also known as Lake Monroe Project Phase 4B, in the amount of $2,638,605. Ms. Wallace.
Phyllis Wallace, Public Works.
Can you lower the microphone a little bit?
We've talked about the 4B project for, it seems, forever. This is one of our first steps in basically closing out the project. We have a loan agreement, a state revolving loan. We would like to get your consideration for closing this agreement out so that we can start paying back the money that we drew down on this. The next step, just since we're talking about this, is to go back to the district. We have a grant with them, and we've been meeting with them in the last couple of weeks to close that grant out as well, with the hopes that they will not ask for any money back that we have drawn down on the grant. That's where we're at.
Vice Mayor Jody Lee and Commissioner Harriet.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand this is the whole Lake Shore project thing. Have we ever got an update what we asked for before? I noticed it's a payment for a loan, but we asked a couple of months ago about an update if we can hold somebody responsible. Have we ever got an update? I mean, I'll tell you what I know, so it's not like it's a, I already know our insurance company's got an outside engineering firm looking at all the contracts. We haven't passed any of the statute limitations, we're still with all of that. I've seen the different letters here where it's being requested that we don't look into it and don't hold people responsible. It's also, here's the checklist of $6.5 million that we've paid out. So I'm just, are we still, so I know this, the insurance company and carrier is still going after, seeing if we can hold people responsible. And I get this is a loan payment, but my only issue, and I'm probably going to agree with this loan we have to pay back, I get it, but my issue is, we asked about this several months ago about being updated, not just us, but the residents, about a $6.5 million that we've paid out, that we've got nothing. And to this day, sitting here right now, we still haven't got nothing. And I understand it's a loan payment, we got to pay it, but I'm just making everybody aware that, I mean, this is $6.5 million that under whoever was in charge got paid, and we got nothing.
That's correct.
That's a lot of taxpayer money. So, anyway, that's it.
Commissioner Harriet and then Commissioner Colwell.
Phyllis, this is just executing the agreement so that we can finalize the loan. This isn't actually making any payments yet.
It would start our calendar back on paying.
Trigger the repayment.
It would, I do not believe that this would preclude us if we have a legal course of action for recovery of any funding from all the parties involved. I don't think that that should have any, I'll refer that to the city attorney, but I don't believe that would preclude us from pursuing that.
Thank you. And then one other question is, the Lake Monroe piece is a piece of the larger project, correct? So the wells and whatever happened at the Lake Shore was a piece of the larger project?
What we typically call the rib site, which is up on Alexander Avenue, that was phases two, three, maybe one. There's a lot of parts that came into play with this project as a whole.
And how do we stand on the project overall, understanding that the Phase 4B at the Lake Shore site was not successful? How do, where do we stand on the overall project?
Well, we are going to have to find replacements, and I think some of it was mentioned during the stormwater component. Where can we pull water from another location versus the lake? I don't think anybody feels comfortable trying to revisit that, but maybe we do a mid-basin, in the Teresa Basin, take the money, find a place to put a reservoir, but we've been working with the district on that. They're aware of a couple of projects that we have made application through the appropriations component earlier this year and also last year. Those were not found favorable, doesn't mean that we can't continue to try to look at those.
Can we get a list of those projects? I'll make a motion to approve.
This motion to approve by Commissioner Harriet and the second by Vice Mayor Jody Lee. Commissioner Colwell?
Oh, yeah, Mike Deco is on both their statements.
Can you make sure your mic is on, Commissioner?
I just want to make sure moving forward that we have accountability, we hold accountable the parties that are responsible for this project not moving forward.
Yes, sir, as long as we have the, just, I'll be quiet now.
Is there any public comment? No, can we please vote? Motion passes six to zero. We're going to go to consideration for a reduction in the fine of $40,050 assessed pursuant to special magistrate case DL-22-241, Massey. Representation from SFR JV HD Property LLC was present regarding 541 Battersea Avenue in Deltona. Ms. Ron.
Yes. Good evening. Danny Rock, Co-Compliance. On April 24, 2024, representative from the property, property owner appeared before the special magistrate to request a reduction, recommendation to reduce the fine after this special magistrate case. Mrs. Ike, special magistrate stated she was in favor of reduction in the case for not acquiring a permit for the fence. Based on the findings, the property is in full compliance at the moment. The special magistrate, Mrs. Ike, made a recommendation to reduce the fine to $5,000, and she stated the case will be required to go before the city commission for the final decision of the lien reduction for a total fine of $5,000 from the amount of $40,050.
Commissioner Villav...
The city commission may approve, I'm sorry, approve for conditions or deny the application for reduction. Co-Compliance recommends to deny the reduction in fines for this permit.
Okay. Commissioner Villavasquez and then Vice Mayor Jody Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Danny, when was this fence put up? Without a permit?
This case started back in 2022, and it went on for a couple of months before we started the fines. They just came forward at the last special magistrate on April 24th to request a reduction in fine.
So they put the fence up in 2022, and the city has been after them to get in compliance?
That is correct.
And they just now got their permit in 2024 for the fence?
Can you pull the case notes real quick? I don't have the date of when they started, but...
Okay, well, I did. I got my date, and it's in April of 2024. And from 2022 to 2024, this management company has been notified by the City of Deltona of not being in compliance.
That's correct. We send certified mail a couple of times. The first time is when we first see the violation, which is the notice of violation. The second certified mail that goes out is when we first present the case at the special magistrate. Third time is when we have to present the case, second time, at the Massey, which when the actually fine officially starts. And after that, we also send them, hey, listen, there is an order now that you owe, you know, the city, and come into compliance so we can stop the fine. So four different times we did certified mail to the address listed on the property praises for the property owner, which is out of California.
Oh, okay, so then the residents are not the property owners?
No, no, it's a rental house. It's a company that owns a lot of properties. My staff pulled up 77 properties here in Deltona. Now, it's, they've had minor cases throughout some of these properties, but this is the one that actually is the worst, which is, they committed a fine for $40,000.
Neglected?
Yes.
Okay. I have a problem with that. We've had residents, actual people who own their homes, and because of financial situations, have been caught in difficult situations where they have to have, paying the city for, been forced by the magistrate to pay the city. So I have a problem with that $5,000, especially when it's a company and it's not a resident that lives, or the owner, the resident is not the owner of the property. I have a problem, I don't know how everyone here feels about it, but I would go with $20,000 the most, or $10,000 the least, that we should charge them for neglection.
Going to go to Vice Mayor Jody Lee, then Commissioner Colwell, then Commissioner Harriet, then Commissioner Shimpas.
I partly agree with you, Commissioner, but, Danny, we have, we're always complaining about houses not being done. If you get on like the property website, I believe these people have over 120 houses just in Deltona. That's just Deltona. That's not counting Lake Mary or Sanford or any of those places. I absolutely, 2 million percent, think they know the rules, they've played the game with the rules, and I don't believe in any reduction. If it was one resident here, just one person, I get it. We should, that's a resident in our city, if they're having, we don't know what their background is, they might be having a hard time, I get it. They said just follow the rules, but I get it. But a company that's making millions of dollars off of us, and they've had many different things over the years, and they own all these houses, they can pay the entire fine. That's my thing.
I agree.
Commissioner Colwell, then Commissioner Harriet.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the reduction in the $40,000 fine.
There's a motion by Commissioner Harriet.
Do we need to make a motion to deny it? No, just let it go.
Madam Attorney, just for clarification.
If you want to deny it, you need to make a motion to deny it.
Okay, so we need to make a motion to deny it? Okay. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Colwell, and a second by Vice Mayor Jody Lee. Is there any public comment? No, can we vote, please? Again, we're voting to deny it. Motion passes six to zero. All right, we're going to go to comments on consent items. Now, before we go to that comment, just wanted to let everyone know the city manager asked to table Section B, so let's go ahead and go to comments on consent items. Public comment, please.
Brandy White, please.
Brandy White, Deltona. B was actually one of the ones I had some discussions to have on, so I'll skip that. But, so I'll just go on to C with the engineering firm. My only question I had was the fact we're still missing key components to our city, right? So I looked on Indeed to see how comparable our positions were being priced at. And for the assistant, we have $68,000 to $85,000, and for the engineer is $91,000 to $114,000. It's very comparable to everywhere else that I'm looking, right? If we just take the lowest amounts on that for a minute, that's $159,000 just based on a salary with no benefits. If we're able to get a company to do it for less than $150,000 and not exceed it and fulfill what we need for the year, why are we filling the positions? That's just my question. Thank you.
Albert Bryan, please.
I find it amazing that the last agenda that we had was canceled, and now it's in consent agenda. It's amazing. I couldn't hear what one you were talking about that he wanted to pull.
B.
See? Okay. So that's fine, but now let's go ahead and pull E, F, and G for at least some kind of discussion of why we're doing what we're doing and spending the kind of money that we're spending on this. I mean, if it was in the agenda items of the last meeting, and wasn't in the consent agenda of the last meeting, that means y'all needed to talk about it. So let's have at least explain why we are spending this money on these items. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Jody Lee and then Commissioner Avila Vazquez.
Thank you. I just want to answer one of the comments from the resident that just spoke. E was an emergency operation that took place. It's already done. That was the problem on Deltona Boulevard and in Normandy. So that, there's no question, the money was spent already. It was an emergency call, so that's done.
All right, Vice Mayor Jody Lee.
I give mayor. On number C, there's, there's, I mean, there's something.
Is there any you want to pull that way we can have discussion on them individually?
I would, I'd like to pull a lot of them and talk about every single one individually, but I know everybody else ain't going to want to do that either. I mean, there's just, there's just a lot of money in there right now. We're talking about raising taxes, but let's, we got, I understand the water main break and all that, those are things we have to pay. I totally get it. But there's, there's just a lot of money in here. We're just talking about money and have to raise stuff, but here we are, just keep putting out the money.
So do you want to pull, I would love to pull C if the rest of the commission's okay with that.
I am.
I'm not good with that. I'm good with that. Mr. Mayor?
Can I get a motion on the stuff that we're not going to pull?
Oh, I think C, real quick. It would cost us a lot more than $150,000 to have the kind of expertise that we're getting with a firm versus one individual person. And it would cost us significantly more than $150,000 to have a highly qualified engineer, let alone multiple engineers, on staff and pay for the training and pay for all the other stuff that comes with it. And so I'd like to make a motion to approve items A through G, tabling B for the next meeting.
So there's a motion to approve A through G, tabling B, and there's a second by Commissioner Avila Vazquez. Would you like Commissioner Harriet to read the motion?
No, I don't know what the motion is. It's just, you guys are all over the map. You don't follow the agenda. I need call off to vote.
Motion passes four to two. All right, I'll go in there. This time, we're going to go ahead and go to commission special reports and requests. We'll start with Commissioner Harriet, and these are just for special reports and requests.
Can we combine special reports, requests, and just comments?
We're going to go through as the agenda has it. If not, Joyce is going to... It's easy. If you have no special requests, say no.
Oh, I have plenty of special requests.
Please, go ahead.
Special request, I'd like to see on the next agenda if it's the will of the commission, policy on proclamations, and making sure that the policy includes language that requires the full commission to vote on proclamations. I'd also like, I've got some questions on the tattoo shop. Does the city have a formal process to apply for a variance?
Yes.
Has, does that process require board action?
In this particular case, yes.
Has the shop owner, business owner, resident applicant filed or begun that process?
Not to my knowledge.
Can we assist him in starting that process?
Yes.
Okay. That's not a special request. Sorry for the confusion. I just, I think that we should be assisting all residents through a process that is not widely advertised. I'd also like to ask that we find a way to accommodate events, special events, when renting the center or any other facility that is willing to rent for consecutive months in a row, be it four, five, six months out. If they're willing to rent for that many months consecutively, I think it would be advantageous for our community to figure out a way to make those happen. I don't know that it's appropriate for the city to sponsor it in terms of, you know, waiving the fee or anything along those lines, but the very least we can do is assist that organization in making it easy to have their event here. And then...
Example, what kind of event you referring to?
Yeah, the flea and farmer's market that was at the center. Speaking with the organizational leadership that put that on, she had challenges. She wanted to rent it every two weeks or every month for the next 12 or six or so months, but we were unable to accommodate because of existing rentals or whatever it be. I think we should do our very best to accommodate events like that that are going to, are requesting for consecutive rentals ongoing, especially for events that fill a gap in our community. And then I would also ask that we can be provided with the most current unrestricted fund balance for the solid waste fund. And that's all I have for special requests.
Commissioner Shimpas?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Commissioner Maritza Avila Vazquez?
None, thank you.
Sorry, I always say your full name every time I come to you. Force of habit, sorry. Vice Mayor Jody Lee, any special requests?
Yes.
All right. At this time, we're going to go to the city attorney comments. Commissioner, sorry, city manager comments?
Oh, yeah. Just let me grab it real fast. First thing I want to say right off the, right out of the gate is I appreciate each and every one of your support for the last nine and a half months. I know it's hard to believe it's been that long, but you see all the extra gray hairs I have. But I do appreciate your support. The doc is in town now, moving, trying to get set up in his house and all, and I have actually spoken to him this afternoon, and he wants you all to know that he's excited, ready to come and start his tenure here with the city of Deltona. We got a request from Deltona High School about doing some advertising in their high school football program for this year. There's, you know, there's sponsorships starting out at $65 for a quarter-page ad. I won't go through all these. I'll give you all a copy of this, but I wanted to know if you all would, had a consensus if you're interested or not in putting a ad in their book.
No. I don't think it's appropriate for the city to advertise in high school.
Okay. Yeah. All right. And Saturday, June 15th, we have a workshop, scheduled joint workshop with P&amp;Z and you all, from 10 to 12 on Saturday, the 15th. And that's pretty much it. I just, again, I thank y'all for your support.
Thank you. We're going to go to city commission comments, and we'll start with Commissioner Harriet again.
Excellent. I, this is kind of on a similar note to our proclamations. I would just be remiss if we didn't also mention that June is PTSD awareness month. And I know that there's a few of us up here that that is an important subject, too. And so I just want to make sure that we acknowledge that and don't forget that group of individuals. And that's all I have.
Commissioner Shimpas?
Just that I appreciate the community showing this evening. It was a great thing to see the community come out in support of something positive for this, for this community for once. And thank you, Glenn, for all you've done while you've been in that seat, and we will miss you in that seat, but look forward to working with you in your continued capacity. So thank you.
Commissioner Avila Vazquez?
Thank you, Mayor Avila. First of all, I want to give a big shout out to everyone who participated in our bike event this, what was it, Saturday? I don't even remember what, what days I'm living anymore. But I'm telling you, if you didn't see it, you missed it. It was awesome. We had 125 bikes, bikers, riding in this bike ride, as they call it, Memorial Day Bike Ride, not to mention the bikers from the sheriff's department who escorted these bikers. And this was, and we also had an event at Memorial Park. They did the memorial for the veterans. The event that took place here in the city outside was for veterans, for firefighters, and for law enforcers who gave their lives while on duty to save others. And I can tell you that our staff, Parks and Recs, Deltona Fire Department, Sheriff's Department, all the bikers and all the residents that attended made this a special success. And this is our first time that the city of Deltona has done something like this. We partner with VIMA, and we look forward to next year's event. I also want to remind you of the MLK unveiling on June 2019. And I just want to mention that Halifax is the sponsor of the spread that's going to be put out inside of City Hall, the center. And Lord Wickham. And those of you who've heard this for the first time, this is our name for Glenn in the background. Thank you so much for everything that you've done for us. I know it's not been easy. It's been a challenge, but you, you know, you put up for the challenge. You didn't give up, like many others have done. And I thank you for it. I know that, I know where you are. I know where you'll be. So we'll be here for you for anything you need. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. You're awesome. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Colwell?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank you, Glenn, for stepping up and taking over this position. I know it's been tough, but we appreciate it and a great job, I think. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Jody Lee?
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Mayor. Glenn, thanks for stepping up when, when we had professional city managers from different states that were too chicken to come here. I appreciate you stepping up, doing what you did. We've had our rough times, good times, bad times, the whole nine yards, and I'm, I know I'm a very difficult soul to deal with, so.
Wait, forgot my...
To the rest of the people, you know, I've heard the comments, I'll make this quick. I know people have said stuff about this, this tattoo shop. The gentleman that operated right here, it's not even in my district, I don't benefit one single dollar from a business coming to this town, but there's ill-informed people that read internet and stuff like that. But the only reason why I brought it up is the dius, I brought it to their city manager, and he told me to bring it up to the dius. That's the only reason why I brought it up. That was it. So when people run off when they don't know what they're talking about, I brought it to Glenn, Mr. Wickham, he told me to bring it up here, I brought it up. That's why I did it. It wasn't something I was trying to do underhanded and all that kind of stuff. That's what I was told to do.
That was explained in the first...
Well, I know, but people come up and they read Facebook and, you know, social media is a great thing. But anyway, it's been, it's been a great run, Glenn. I'm sure you're looking forward to going back to the water department. You know, I'll just have to come over there and harass you. They actually let me into the building over there, too, so, anyway. Yeah, I appreciate everybody. I'll talk to you shortly. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, everybody, for doing what you guys did, working with Glenn all this time. Y'all have a good night.
All right, I do have a couple of things. First off, Lauren King is finally home, thankfully, from his big scare that he had. So if you guys can, he's, he's accepting visitors, Sue made that very apparent. So we're very happy that former Commissioner King is home and getting better. I too want to thank Glenn for his hard work, putting up with every single one of us. I'm sure you had to put up with us in one way, form or another. So thank you, Glenn. It really does, I say it from the bottom of my heart. I want to, I typically don't do this, but I want to respond to two very important things. And I'm going to ask, out of respect, I did not interrupt a single person, I'm asking for the same courtesy, both from the dius and from the audience. First thing I want to address is, I was here in City Hall the other day around 12 o'clock. That was alluded to on social media, which I don't know why I'm going to respond to, because this is the stupidest thing I've ever heard, that my wife and I were here doing stuff that we shouldn't be doing. Okay? I was picking up letters that I wrote myself, unlike a certain commissioner that says that I, staff did, I wrote these letters myself. Staff helped me by printing them and by folding them through a machine, because I don't have access to that machine. To appreciate every teacher we have in the city of Deltona, okay? So just, I want to clear that up, because...
It's not me, right?
No, 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 no. It's the person that chose to be at a Rolling Stone concert instead of being here, voting for this water increase, because that was more important. Number two, number two, I got an email forward from, or I didn't get, they showed it to me in person, because they didn't want to be ousted, from a certain club, from an email that the former vice, that the former mayor of the city of Deltona sent to her, to her club members. And I found it very hypocritical to sit here and call me hateful, to call me everything that I've been called on social media, I don't care what they said in person. Most people were very respectful, and I'm very grateful for that. But because of two reasons. So because of my religious beliefs, I choose not to sign something, and somebody on this dius wants to make it a thing, because they're in the middle of an election and they're scared they're going to lose. I'm sorry, but everybody on here, I get told this all the time, have equal, we have equal powers. You know, Commissioner Avila Vazquez signed it. That's awesome. I never once said, I'm, I don't want anyone to sign it. I simply said, I can't sign it. One of the reasons being my religious beliefs, and for that to be diminished and me be called hateful, I find it very hypocritical when that same, some of those same people, when Nick Lully was being attacked because he was a Republican person that's gay, did not stand up a single time, and that, and that, and the deaf, the silence was so deafening, and it was so disgusting. I was the first person that stood up here and asked for a censure of this person. Consistently got emails, consistently got letters, not only being racist, but homophobic, not a single word to come to anybody's defense. So you know what? I, I, I don't believe in the lifestyle, but I still respect people. I still treat people with respect. And I'm sorry, to speak and proclaim love is very different from living it. Practicing to live that is very different. I'm glad some of the residents saw through the phoniness of what that commissioner did during this whole week. I was accused of making this whole dius the most bipartisan, and that's exactly what she did tonight. She divided her community, she divided her city. And the second thing is, it's very clear, you can't sit up here, dress up as a maiden, and confess that you don't want the government to sit here and tell you how or what not to you do with your reproductive system, but then you're also here telling government, hey, come and, let's see what I do my better. You can't have it both ways. Government should not be involved in this, especially local, especially local government. We're here to do ordinances, fix potholes... We're here to do ordinances, fix potholes, we're here to do budgets, and, and I just, I find it very hypocritical that twelve years in office, Heidi Hersberg not a single time did a proclamation. Five years that Ms. McCool was here, not a single time pushed for a proclamation, until it became advantageous to them, and I am so glad that that, that the residents saw through the phoniness of that. And lastly, I will say this, Commissioner Schimpfus, respectfully, before you go to attack me in whatever it was that you wrote, I would verify why it was that Commissioner Vila Vasquez was the one that signed the proclamation. I'm not going to sit here and say who the other person was, but to sit here and just attack one person without getting all the facts is, is, is honestly very sad. Means adjourned.